Welcome to this podcast, which is the second in a series of podcasts that look behind the scenes at what goes on at Hinkley and Bosworth Borough Council and the work that it does within the community. My name's Michael Malaney, I'm a councillor in Hinkley, I'm also the executive member with responsibilities for the voluntary sector in Hinkley and Bosworth. And one of the great things about this role is finding out just how much work goes on behind the scenes in many different community groups across the borough. Often unless you live in a particular village or unless you're involved in a particular hobby, you don't always realise what actually goes on in the community and the huge amounts of time and hours that people put in to make our community a better place. So joining me today are three people who make a huge contribution in the community with their voluntary work. We've got Neil from Hinkley Tennis Club, Fay from the L O M Church in Baulston, and Rachel, who manages the four community houses in the borough. So over to Neil, if we can have some introductions of who you are.
Yep. Hi, Michael. I'm Neil Roberts. I'm the chairman of Hinkley Town Tennis Club.
Hi, I'm Fay Clark, and I'm the minister at Elham Christian Church in Baulston.
Hello, Michael. I'm Rachel, and I coordinate the work of the community houses.
Thank you. So if we can go through each of you, what exactly got you involved in volunteering? And what keeps you going? Because I know all of you have been contributing for a number of years in the community. So over to you, Neil, what got you first involved? And what keeps you doing voluntary work and good work in the community?
Yeah, sure. I guess my volunteer journey started as a number of parents do, as a sporting dad, and helping my son and then his teams with their tennis. So I guess it started from there, really. And from there, I mean, I enjoyed helping the young teams and organise it. Then I got offered a chance to have a bigger part in the club and join the committee in a variety of different roles, eventually becoming chairman, and then just really getting involved with us as a community club. And from there, I just really enjoyed the variety of community volunteering, things that we put on at the club. So yeah, I guess my journey started as a lot do as a parent of a sports club.
That's great. And Fay?
So I guess I started volunteering as a church member. The church has always been quite active within the community. Then I became the minister about eight years ago, and that's kind of increased over time, looking at the needs in rural community and how we can meet those needs. What keeps me going, I think, it's seeing the difference that it makes in the lives of people.
Well, I started near enough 20-odd years ago at Hinkley and Bosworth on an 18-month contract, which was a project based in the centre of Earl Shilton. I spent the first probably three months drinking coffee and knocking on doors and getting people to come in and find out what the issues were in a local community. And from there, we developed groups, we encouraged parents to volunteer, young volunteers, and it just grew from there. So quickly, we established what they wanted. Now, like I say, 20-odd years later, we've got four community projects, loads of volunteers, which we wouldn't do without, and work across the borough. I think for me, I mean, the job is, I love the job, it's so varied. During lockdown, it was a nightmare, and I couldn't wait to get back. The first group we did after lockdown, we got in the car and we were like, this is what we miss, just seeing the people, are they socialised? And sort of the work, the volunteers contribute. So it's perfect.
That's great. Thank you, Rachel. So we're going through a bit of a challenging time at the moment, and obviously as volunteers, you see that. So how do you think your voluntary work is helping people in the community at these challenging times? So Neil?
Yeah, so it's a good question. And obviously, the cost of living crisis has affected large parts of the community. So what we try to do as a community club is really just keep our costs down. We appreciate, you know, there's a lot of expense out there for people. We haven't increased our membership fees. Most of the people who come through our club are members. We haven't increased our fees now for about four or five years. Really just keep it a sport that's affordable. I mean, tennis as a sport is often seen as quite elitist. I think we're probably the furthest from that. We like to look at ourselves as a really accessible community sports club. But to do that, we have to keep our prices, you know, really, really low. So juniors can play, you know, over 65s, everybody can join us. For example, to play for a whole year at the club for a junior is like £25 for the whole year. And that really opens up the game and the sport to, you know, as many different age groups, as many people as possible. But you're right, it's a difficult climate out there. So we just try and help and support as much as possible, as well as, you know, the variety. And I'm sure we'll talk about the free stuff that we put on. So the free sessions that we put on for the Ukraine community, that we put on for our Feel Good Tennis programmes. At the moment, we're doing lots of stuff with menopause groups. So we do lots of free activities as well for those. You just can't afford to do some of the stuff that we put on.
Yeah, you do lots of good work in the communities, because I attended an event where you work with the Ukrainian community and offered tennis to that community, which obviously is people who've gone through a very difficult time following the Russian invasion of their country. And you've opened the doors to the club and made them feel very welcome. And I know you do lots of good work with people with learning disabilities as well. And I think you're in line possibly for an award soon, or you've had awards for the work you do in the community?
Yeah, we've worked really hard on our community delivery over the past three years. And yeah, it was really nice to be recognised for that. And, you know, the last month or so, we were recognised as the best community tennis club in the Midlands. So I think it's just really good validation for the stuff that I think that we do.
Well, it's an amazing achievement, given how big the Midlands is. And you've got Birmingham, Leicester, Nottingham, all these cities. And Hinkley's got the most community welcoming club in the Midlands. That's a real, real, real big achievement. And so Fay, how do you face, you know, the cost of living? There must be many people you see who are struggling, and how do you help them through your work?
So I think with rural community, especially with rural community isolation, so lack of public transport, it's a real challenge. So people can't get to food banks, people can't get out into even the town like Hinkley. So for us, we try and open every day with different things. We run a community cafe on a Tuesday, which we just do at cost. And that's, it's lovely. We get kind of cross generation there. So we get mums and tots, and we get the older generation, a good mix of male and female, which can be unusual. And then on a Thursday, we're just about to start a mums stay and play group. And then we do a Friday lunch for kind of the older generation. It's not set for that generation, but you get a certain calibre of people that come for lunch. So yeah, it's brilliant. And during lockdown, we started a Love Your Neighbour scheme, where we started to provide like home education packs and food banks. So we've now got a new storehouse. We're supporting three local primary schools. We've just had another one come on board at the beginning of 2024, which is supporting families in rural community that can't afford to feed their families. And we're seeing, well, we started in 2021 with probably about six families. We've just done our Easter hampers, and we had just over 70 families. So we're seeing a massive increase in the requirement for food provision, I guess.
It is amazing, all the work you do in Baulston. It's really good that you're there in the middle of the village, supporting the people in the village. Because as you say, not everybody in rural areas can travel, not everybody has a car, not everyone can get to places. I know, obviously, we've lost the 159 bus that used to serve Baulston and to Hinkley and Colville, although we'll still keep trying to get that back. And hopefully at some point, we can. But whilst there isn't those bus services and other ways of people getting about, the fact that you're there in the village, supporting people, making sure they have that community network and can see people and get the support they need is really great. So you really are doing great work in the heart of Baulston, and thank you for all you do. And Rachel, the four community houses, and I know you also do outreach work in the rural areas, as well as the four houses in Hinkley, Burbage, Barwell and Earl Shilton. So obviously, you must come into contact with a lot of people in need of support and help. And how does your work help them get through these difficult times?
Yes, we do. And in fact, we were just saying about joining up, doing another cooking session in Baulston. So when people get the food parcel, they can make a meal out of it. Because you do sometimes hear, they're like, oh, I haven't got a clue what to do with that. Or, oh, I don't like this, and I don't like that. So to put together recipe cards or sort of simple meal plans. Transport is a big thing for a lot of the places we go to, you know, they are, especially the rural ones, but even between, we've got volunteers that come between Barwell, Wycombe and Burbage, and they struggle for buses now, whereas it used to, you know, they'd support all of the houses. So we've had to move volunteers around so they can carry on offering the service. Welfare support has been a big thing. We've been lucky enough through Cadant to get funding to supply welfare support workers. Most people are a bit too proud to sort of say they're struggling, but come into our groups where we're offering affordable sort of cooking sessions, craft sessions. You build up a rapport with people, and then they start opening up about issues they've got, where we can link into services that we work with. We were lucky with the cooking. We originally started through Sainsbury's funding for their Love Food 8 Ways. So as has always been about, like, using what you've got in your fridge, or, you know, thinking about meal plans and planning ahead. But they've always been busy, they just keep growing.
So it's great, all the work that you're doing, really helping and supporting people through these difficult times. And obviously, all these things do cost money, though. So in terms of keeping the organisations going and keeping the work going, how do you manage for funding and things, Neil?
Yeah, it's really difficult. It's a case of just keeping your ear to the ground to see what grants are out there. There's often a lot, but it's just tapping into the right ones. I mean, we've been quite lucky. We've got a variety of grants from a lot of different places, you know, including from the council, from Active Together Leicestershire, from the LTA. And they just keep us going, because it's expensive to get the equipment to keep the, to keep the club running, and to give, you know, the kit to players you can't necessarily afford, you know, to get a racket or balls, etc. So yeah, it's getting harder, because you're obviously also competing against all the people who are also desperate and in need of the money as well. So it's just making that right case and just setting out, you know, your stall about, you know, why are you going to use that money, how are you going to use it, and who can benefit from it. So it's just being really clear on, you know, why you're going to use that money and how you're going to use it.
And Fay, your group does a load of good work in Baulston. So how do you keep financially going as an organisation?
Yeah, I mean, it's always, money's always challenging, isn't it? But we are fortunate to be supported by Hinkley and Bosworth and Leicestershire County Council. We've actually just had a huge grant from the Seven Trent Community Fund, which has helped us to put a permanent storehouse up in our kind of grounds. But I think it's just, again, yeah, being wise about what grant funding's out there. What we found really helpful was the grant session that the council put on, where they had lots of people from different grant organisations come, so you could have a chat with them. That's how we came across the Seven Trent Grant, and we were able to discuss our application with them. So that was really helpful. So, I mean, there's lots of grants out there, but like you say, there's a lot of people vying for a small amount of money. So having the ability to write good grants and be able to justify what you're doing, and having those kind of metrics in place to be able to measure what you're doing, how you're doing it, and prove that it is a requirement of need, I guess, in your local vicinity.
Thank you, Fay. And Rachel, I mean, a lot of councils at the moment are going through difficulties in terms of finances, not able to sort of keep funding things. But we've still got, obviously, the four community houses in Hinkley and Bosworth and all the work that goes on in the community. So how do you manage with funding in terms of keeping all the services and outreach going that you do in the community?
I think, again, we are lucky because Hinkley and Bosworth supporters, we also have some funding through our Shilton Town Council. Recently, we had a great grant from Cadant, which offered us, well, they gave us vouchers to buy things, as well as to provide three members of staff. And they've just been invaluable to us. Tesco's recently donated a lot of cooking equipment. Sainsbury's, through Leicestershire County Council, gave us a big grant for the community kitchens, which we've set up. But our volunteers are real bargain hunters. So they'll go round every car boot, they'll put appeals on Facebook, they'll ask for people. So if they've got projects coming up, you know, they're not afraid to ask, and they'll do a bit of fundraising themselves. So we managed to maintain it that way. Some of the little groups that we've got, they will go through the RCT for sort of smaller grants. And again, they're just really good, I think, because they have to budget in their own lives. They're really good at penny pinching and doing it. So we are very fortunate that way.
Yes, we're very lucky. I mean, we met with Cadant yesterday, who've been doing a lot of good work in terms of supporting the good work in the community. And obviously, having a team of volunteers and your ears on the ground in the community, I think, does really help, doesn't it, in terms of being able to source?
Yeah, definitely. Yes.
One of the issues that's really arisen in the last few years, particularly, I think, since Covid situation, where people were obviously trapped in their houses for long periods of time, is the increase in mental health and people struggling with their mental health in the community. And obviously, being engaged in the community, you must see this on the front line. So how do you, starting with you, Neil, help and support people who perhaps are lacking in confidence, or perhaps going through sort of anxiety or depression and other mental health challenges that so many people face at the moment?
Yeah, it's something, I touched on it before, we addressed directly, because we were appreciative of the benefits of sport and tennis. But we could see, you know, some of the issues, some of our members and some of the people who came through our club with those mental health issues. So, you know, we wanted to look at that, and we did. And we came up with something, you know, quite novel, that mixed the benefits of sport with some mental health provision. So we came up with a programme that was called Feel Good Tennis, which is a six-week programme that is an hour and a half. And people get introduced to tennis. So they come to us, and they come on court, and they learn, you know, how to play tennis. Then they come off the court, and then we put a wellbeing lead in front of the group, and they chat and sit and discuss, you know, issues regarding mental health anxiety and so on. And we also try and tailor make that group to the type of group that we've got in front of us. So for example, I mentioned about, we've got a menopause and a perimenopause group at the moment. So our lead talks about menopause issues, talks about nutrition and diet and so on. So we're trying to sort of hit that mental health topic sort of head-on by coming at it slightly different angle and providing something different. So far, it's proven really successful. But again, we were lucky, we got a grant from the LTA for that. We couldn't, we couldn't put that on if it wasn't for the grant that was given to us by the LTA. But it's something that we're looking to continue, because there's a, there's a, there's a big need out there. You know, there's a lot of people coming to us saying, can you put something on for us to help in the mental health and the wellbeing mindfulness space? So we'll continue to do it as long as we, you know, we can do it.
That's great work, because I think sport does have a big role to play in dealing with mental health and mental wellbeing, because I think there's lots of evidence that shows that if you're active in sport and other physical activity, it does have a very big positive effect on mental wellbeing. So that's all good work happening there. And yourself, Fay, how does the church help deal with, obviously, there's going to be people in Baulston, perhaps with isolation and loneliness and anxiety, and how does your work support them in the community?
I think it's just being available and accessible, and not having a closed-door approach, but an open-door approach, having a safe environment for people to just come and be themselves, where they can come out of the house, they can have a cup of tea, they can have a piece of cake, they can have somebody to talk to if they want to. If they don't want to, that's equally fine. I mean, for us, we're fortunate enough to have one of the Hinkley and Bosworth Borough Council wellbeing offices on site with us, which is such a massive asset, to be able to link people into her, but also for her to be able to see people on the ground. I think there's something about being able to chat face-to-face. And the other thing that we see is that, especially with food hampers, that the food is only scratching the surface. But it's only through building relationship, I guess, and trust, that becomes a safety for people to share their other issues with you. And then it's just been able to have the ability to signpost people and to walk that journey with them, really. I think a lot of people don't have people to walk the journey with them, or people are afraid. They hear mental health, or they hear depression, or they hear isolation, or they hear anxiety. And a lot of people don't actually know how to deal with that. And a lot of people just want somebody, I guess, to walk the journey and to be there, and to listen, listen without talking, listen without judgement, know that it's a safe place for them to share and to help them through that process, and that they're not on their own. In a world where there's a lot of people, I think a lot of people feel very alone. You can be in a busy room, can't you, and still feel very alone and very isolated. So we are quite proactive when we have new people come in to make sure that they feel at home, to make sure that they're introduced to a volunteer or a staff member, who always spends some time having a chat with that person when they come through the door, make sure they've got contact details when they leave, they know what's available to them within the local community. So yeah, that's what we generally try and do.
So being there is really helping people. If they were stuck at home, not seeing anyone, then perhaps a lot of the issues they have wouldn't be being addressed. So being there in the community and supporting them is a way in which they can perhaps get that support they need to improve their quality of life and have a better, better, better life. Rachel, you obviously, the four community houses are based in the sort of heart of Barwell, Earl Shilton, Hinkley and Burbage. So you must meet many people there. And obviously, how do you go about helping and supporting people who perhaps come along and have issues that they need support with?
Yeah, but I mean, that's the big thing that we sort of think, most of the groups, they may come along just to take part in cooking or crafting, but to be honest, it's all the social side. A lot of them, if they're on their own all week, or they just get them out, even on rainy days where they said, oh, quite easily, just stay in for the day. I think the support network that they build within the groups and themselves, I mean, we've been through births, deaths, marriages, you name it, it's like, put the worlds to rights. We've got a lot of people that are carers, so they've sort of said, even to just come out once a week to be part of a group where they can have a laugh and chat, and if they've got any worries, discuss it. So the friendships that form, I think, is so important. Similar to you, if we have new people, we work closely with the local area coordinators and social prescribers, adult social care, they'll ring us and they'll say, I'm working with someone locally. So we ask sort of come and meet us, meet the volunteers, have a look at the room, see how it's set up, and then introduce them to the lead volunteer. So it puts their mind at ease, so they're not going into a room of people that's just all going to sit and stare at them. They could all have a, you know, we can say, well, you can sit there, and you can't sit there. And our volunteers are great, because they've been there themselves. You know, that's how they became volunteers, is being socially isolated or having problems of their own. So we always say, within an hour of being there, you'll feel like you've known the group for a long time. So we always encourage that. We always encourage them to come and meet us before, see the room, and develop the friendship. I think half the time, they don't even bother crafting, they're quite happy having a cup of tea and sorting the world out.
Fair enough, if it makes them happy. That sounds great. You're improving their quality of life. So in terms of all three of you, you've all obviously given a huge amount of time over the years to your volunteering work, and you keep doing it and keep carrying on. Can each of you sort of identify perhaps particular events or things you've done that make you particularly proud of your volunteering and help you keep going and keep at it? I mean, Neil?
Yeah, I think for me, it was, it's the Ukraine events. I mean, the first one that we put on, and bearing in mind, this is a group who've just been displaced from their homeland, and, you know, finding their, finding a new home, finding their place to put events on and to show that as a community, we're welcoming them. And then to see, you know, their faces and how they were feeling and the appreciation that, you know, they are being looked after, they are thought of. And they do have a home away from home here. Yeah, everyone who helped with that, and we continue to do that now, I think we're on about our sixth or seventh now. And we do it because, you know, the warmth that we get back and the appreciation, yeah, it just, it just, it just makes us, you know, feel so good ourselves, that we can, we can show that generosity of spirit, because we'd like to think, if the, you know, the shoe was on the other foot, someone else would do that for us. So I think that for me, that, so those Ukraine sessions, which is why, why we do what we do, because, you know, they, they just, they're just so appreciative of, you know, having, having a home now. So, yeah.
Yeah, I attended one of the events, and it was pretty clear that the people there were really happy. They'd found an activity that they were, they were keen on doing, and they'd found people who were being friendly and welcoming to them. Because obviously, these are people coming from an unbelievable situation, that we can't really begin to imagine what happens with a country being invaded, and the risk to their life, and having to come to a strange place, and therefore to have a group that's welcomed them as much as the Hinkley Tennis Club.
You need to practise your tennis more, I need to say that.
Nice. I'm probably, I'm probably not the best, probably not the best, best player. I certainly do need improvement.
No comment on that, Michael, no comment.
Well, I'm oddest enough to say that my skills in tennis are not, not the greatest. I don't think I'll be taking it up full-time any time soon.
You know where we are.
I can always have a few guys. I'm sure even the worst players can get a bit better. So there's hope for us all. Fay, have you got any particular experiences you can think of that you've really welcomed and has really spurred on your volunteering activity?
There's loads. I mean, it's every day, isn't it? There's something every day that is encouraging for us. I think when you said that, the one thing that really kind of, well, they're interlinked really, that sprang to mind was particularly with our holiday hamper scheme. In an environment that can be quite daunting for people to come into, it's a really lovely atmosphere where actually people are starting to stay and talk to one another. And we had one lady who came in, she said, I've got some good news and I've got some bad news. I was like, oh, let's have the bad news first, because, you know, then we'll finish on a good note. She said, well, the bad news is that I won't be coming anymore. And I was like, oh, why is that? The good news is I've had a promotion at work. She said, but I just want to say thank you, because without the support that I've had for kind of the last 12 months, we wouldn't have been able to keep our family fed. And I think, for me, those sorts of stories where you can help people to go from a place of absolute survival to a place where they're entering into being able to thrive and take care of their family, there's nothing more rewarding or wonderful than to hear those kind of stories where people have come from where they are, and they've come through to a broad and spacious place, I guess, where the, from the valleys to the mountain tops. And yeah, it just makes it all worthwhile.
Exactly. Because you put a huge amount of time and effort into the work you do in Baulston. I know you're always on call all times and hours of the day. So sometimes you might think, is it worth it? But obviously, experiences like that show that all the work you do really is worth it. And you can say, look, I've made a real positive impact on one person, I'm sure more than one person's lives in Baulston, makes all that time.
Why my husband would that?
Makes all the time.
And he's going, I never see you. I say, councillor Michael said it's all right.
There you go. I'm good to be offering marriage counselling there. Over to Rachel, have any particular experiences you've had that have been really positive?
Yeah, I mean, I think most of the groups are, to some point during each session, we always stand back and just look at, you know, how people are communicating and having a laugh and chat. And just, it's just nice to think all the hard work that you've put in before. I mean, they do think when we've finished the session, that's it, we go home. It's, they don't think of anything else that goes into it. One that I always remember, we had two ladies that came on, we do day trips as well, and they'd sort of got to be friends, but it was getting near Christmas, and they both got families. But I think it was a case of, oh, my son doesn't want me this year, and the other son doesn't want me. So they were looking at spending Christmases on their own, and they decided, let's do Christmas together. And it was so nice, because they just did, one made, one made the trifle, one cooked the turkey, it was who's going to bring the sherry. And it was just one of those that you just think there'd have been two people sitting on their own at Christmas, thinking, oh, my families don't want me this year. And they continue to be, you know, they're still friends now. But it was lovely, because they just, they said we had the best Christmas ever. So that was, it was just one of those that I think over the years I've always come back to.
It's nice, because obviously, nothing worse than being alone at Christmas, to the fact that you help get them together and have a nice Christmas was a really positive thing. So we've heard today about all the good things that go on in volunteering. And I guess there's maybe people watching this who want to get involved in volunteering, want to put things back into the community. So starting with Neil, what would you say to anyone who's sort of on the fence, not sure whether they get involved in volunteering in a community group? What would your advice to them be?
Just dive in and do it. You won't regret it. You'll make, you know, a whole load of new funds, you know, as the guys have talked about today. You almost build a new family up within your, within your group. And, you know, you can't place enough emphasis on that. It's amazing. I certainly, because I moved to the area about eight years ago now, found a new home through volunteering myself. So if you are thinking about it, just speak to, speak to someone about it, and they'll immediately tell you the benefits of it. And you won't regret it, that's all I'll say.
I think my advice would be, everybody's got something to give, whether you've got half an hour, whether you've got an hour, whether you've got a day, maybe it's just once a month. Everyone's got some sort of skill, ability, or something within them that can be used in the volunteer sector. And they will never, ever find a closed door, I think. And that, yeah, when you do that, it changes your perspective on life, and it's very rewarding, very fulfilling, and it brings a lot of joy. it's very rewarding, very fulfilling and it brings a lot of joy.
Yes, we've had people that have come to us that have been a bit nervous. So we've encouraged them to volunteer. We've sort of seen them in groups. We've got one young volunteer. She came, she'd got sort of issues and problems and it was a bit like, you'd be really good helping us because she was good within the group. So we try and encourage it. But any of the volunteers, we've had some that it's given them enough confidence, they've gone on to full-time employment, they've gone on to volunteer at hospitals. This, like you say, there's something that everybody can offer. And confidence building. I think that's what we always find with our volunteers. They might come in and they're a bit sort of reserved and quiet, but give them, even just say, right, can you make the tea today? Is giving them bit of sort of something that they can do and think, yeah, I can do something, um, you know, and, and growing confidence from there.
Well, a big thank you to Neil, Fay and Rachel for taking part today and, and letting us have a, have a, a view of all the work that they do within the community. And a big thank you to all the people who volunteer throughout Hinkley and Bosworth. We're incredibly fortunate in this borough that there are so many local community groups operating in towns and villages across the borough, taking part in lots of different voluntary activities, hobbies, sports, right across the spectrum. So there's loads of work going on in Hinkley and Bosworth. So a big thank you to all our volunteers. Thank you again to Neil, Fay and Rachel. And if you want to get involved in volunteering in the borough, please take the plunge now. There's loads of ways which you can help the community. And as you've heard today, it can really make a difference to other people's lives. So if you want to get out there, make the community a better place and help improve other people's lives, I would definitely recommend you do what Neil, Fay and Rachel have done and get involved in volunteering.